Okay, as a preliminary matter, this is 6:32 PM. This is Marie Clonar, Chairman of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm all members. Our President can hear me when I call your name. Please respond in the affirmative. William Collins. Bill Blaze?
Yes.
Rick Lawrence?
Here.
Rick Walsh?
Here.
Marie Clonar is here. We do not have any staff. Good evening. This open meeting of the North Attleboro Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the North Attleboro Planning Board is convened by go-to-meeting. And please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website. Unless otherwise noted, the public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. We will now turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair taking care to identify yourself. Any item with public comment or during the public comment period, after the members of the Board have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. I will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify themselves, giving their name and address only. Once I have a list of public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the minutes. As it is noted, the Chair is reviewing. I am still reading all those lovely minutes. And I will get them to you as soon as I can. Item B, the North Attleboro Open Space and Recreation Letter of Support and Review. I will be perfectly honest. I have not finished reading it yet. So I personally am not ready to put together a letter of support or review. It's due. The plan has to be submitted to the State by the end of the month. We have a meeting on the 20th. Is it okay with you guys if we put that off to the 20th? Yes, okay.
Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, item C, a request on 21 East Street for a parking management plan condition. It is a request by the applicant for the review of a proposed parking management plan as required for the conditions of approval, special permit 168. I believe I see Mr. Andronico here. Do you want to... Would you like to present your proposal?
Absolutely. I will myself on camera here. And I believe I should be able to share my screen or...
Oh, you're gonna have to give me a minute. This is the first time I've done this.
Sure. No.
Okay, let's see what happens.
All right.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, I'm going to give this an attempt.
She was... We did it.
All right. Major hurdle cleared right there.
There you go.
All right, so we submitted this plan on 4/26. And along with it is a narrative which I won't read aloud. I will just, I'll go through the exhibits that are included as a part of this plan. But before I start, I'll give a general overview of what this plan consists of. So what we've concluded is that the best way to achieve and accomplish the conditions set forth is to utilize the use of a shuttle service and some additional parking we had at our sister property, which is owned by us, located in Cumberland, Rhode Island, which is eight miles away from 21 East and approximately a 13-minute drive. We have a pretty significant parking ratio on that site and plenty of available parking. In fact, we've identified 115 additional free parking spaces on that site. Truthfully, more than 115, but we're going to earmark 115 parking spaces at that alternate site in Cumberland, Rhode Island. And the intent would be, and we've attached exhibits to back this up. We've attached an exhibit that shows our amended lease language, which basically explains that upon a rain event, which the site will regularly monitor, we will be sending a notice out to our residences. And then they will have the opportunity to either move their vehicles from the back lot, the lot identified on the sheet here. This is where we experienced flooding from time to time. They will be instructed to relocate their vehicles from those parking spaces to any of the other open parking spaces on the site. Once those parking spaces are full and basically there are no more spaces available, they'll be directed to the sister property that I had mentioned, which is Cumberland Farms in Cumberland, Rhode Island, where designated parking spaces have been identified for them to park their vehicles. And then on 30-minute intervals, we have contracted with a group called Trans Action. And we've also attached that signed agreement, executed agreement, as an exhibit to this plan, where they'll be conducting or executing every 30 minutes round trips from the Cumberland site to the 21 East site. It's also noted in the lease language that should a resident fail to remove their vehicle, it'll be towed to the Cumberland site at the resident's expense. So that, in a nutshell, is the plan, the parking plan, which we think is the most effective way to accomplish the approval condition. And we think that this more than sufficiently offers the opportunity for our residences to relocate. For instance, you know, we only needed 104 spaces. We're cordoning off 115 spaces. And we have probably another 10 spaces available should we need them at any given time. But that is the high-level overview of the plan. And I'm more than happy to answer any specific questions at this time.
Okay, Greg.
Hi.
Walsh, excuse me, sorry.
Sorry. I guess technically it meets what we were asking for, right?
Yep.
Oh. I'm good then.
Mr. Collins?
It seems kind of an inconvenience for the...
I'm having trouble hearing you, Bill. Can you turn your volume up a little?
I'll try it.
Nope.
Better?
No.
No?
No.
My volume up to the highest level.
Well, we'll all be quiet and listen.
All right. I'm not sure where Mike is on this. Anyway, I'm a little concerned about the convenience for the residents. I'm sure that they'll complain about it. But my question is whether this is their long-term solution. And secondly, how many spaces are affected by the potential flooding? How many spaces remain on the site that are not affected? How many residents might be affected by this flooding due to the excess over the existing parking spaces unaffected? In other words, how many residents in the facility will have to worry about shuttling to Cumberland, Rhode Island?
I think I got it all. That it was hard to hear, but I turned my, cranked my volume way up. But I think I got it all. So the first, I think, comment was the level of inconvenience to the residences. And naturally, we were trying to find a closer solution. However, you know, we've had some discussions with our leasing group and our property management group. And a 13-minute drive is not ideal. But it is, I think, a reasonable amount of time, considering that, you know, for instance, if a resident was driving home from work, they wouldn't necessarily have to drive directly to the site and then to Cumberland. So that distance, you know, may vary. And, you know, we've calculated it's about 13 minutes. I've driven it myself. It was actually less. But per Google Maps, it said 13. So I thought it would be most appropriate to include that in our presentation. So we are aware of the inconvenience and we're certainly sensitive to it. And there'll be, you know, as a means of easing some of that, you know, we'll likely make some concessions in leases or maybe offer car wash vouchers. But, you know, that's going to be kind of a case-to-case basis, depending on how much pain they really feel. I think the second note was, what is this, our long-term solution? And the answer to that is, at the moment, yes. However, as I've mentioned in the past, we are exploring any and every opportunity to relieve this condition altogether. Because naturally, it would serve us to not have to send our residences to our sister property in Cumberland. However, at the moment, what we're planning on doing is installing our civil design, installing the civil infrastructure per the drawings which were submitted to and approved by the town. Once that design is complete, I think we'll have a better sense of what the condition will really be out there and how many spaces will really be impacted. This 104 spaces that we see noted on our plan is our worst-case scenario, which we just, we thought was an appropriate measure and appropriate condition to show in this plan because we wanted to be prepared for the worst-case scenario. In conjunction with finalizing the actual work and getting a sense of what the condition will be on the site during a rain event, we're hoping that the hopefully imminent dredging of the 10-mile river, which I think is being executed by the Army Corps or leases in for approval by the Army Corps of Engineers, in addition to the repairs to the culverts upstream, that will, at the very least, maybe minimize the scope of whatever mitigation we might find would be effective and hopefully improve the condition. But until that time where our site work condition is complete and the dredging is complete, we won't truly know what problem we have to solve. We do know that with this plan, which was the condition of approval, we have accommodated the spaces that we need to accommodate for. And then I believe there was one more question, but you'll have to forgive me after that long rant. I think I might have forgotten or maybe couldn't quite hear it. Oh, I believe you asked me how many spaces would be left. So we have 360 parking spaces total. 104, we deem as potentially being impacted. So assuming that we would have to relocate 104 vehicles, it would be 256 parking spaces remaining on site. In regards to how many specific tenants may be impacted by this, it's a little difficult to say because we have one and two bedrooms. And it's difficult to determine if a two-bedroom will have two vehicles or if a one-bedroom will have two vehicles or vice versa. So to give you a number of residents that may be impacted, it was, I would say, it'd be virtually impossible to give you that number because we don't know how many vehicles each unit will have. However, we do intend on enforcing some parking conditions where some of the one-bedrooms would only be allowed one parking space. There may be some conditions or scenarios where we allow them two. And then two bedrooms would likely also only be allowed two. So I don't have a good way to calculate that at this time. But in any case, the spaces themselves are really what's important. And we do believe we've accommodated for the number. We've actually over accommodated for the number of spaces that would be impacted.
Thank you.
Did you get your questions answered, Bill?
Yes, I think so.
Oh, good. Okay. Mr. Blaze?
I am good. I have no questions.
Mr. Lawrence?
I abstain on this one.
Okay. In regards to the fact that this only refers to the review of the parking management system under the special permit, I have no questions either because they've identified the number of spaces that could be impacted and provided an alternative for the residents to park. And as you indicated, someone indicated earlier, it is not our concern. It is up to the management group and the leasing group to work out any issues with the tenants regarding parking. That's not our issue. So I need a motion then to accept the proposed parking management plan. Did anyone want to say anything strictly about the parking plan? If you could raise your hand.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Clapp? Yep.
I would like to talk about...
I'm gonna have to speak up a little bit, Stephen. I guess we're having a little trouble with the... That's good. You're closer. That's fine. That's fine.
I'd like to speak to the Condition 20 about the management plan. And I think the idea behind that management plan was flooding events. And I think when the Planning Board put that condition on, the Planning Board was concerned about flooding from the 10-mile river. I don't think the Planning Board ever thought that there'd be flooding from the impervious surfaces with ordinary rain events. That's what we have. We have, every time there's an ordinary rain event, the parking lot fills up with water because the drainage system does not work. And to go to this length of trucking people to another town to park instead of fixing the system, getting the water off the lot, keeping the parking available, alleviating the problem that my client has with their cellar still full of water. Other people have the same problem. I was walking along by the Rico property on Route 1. And the owner came out and he was upset at what was happening when water events from the runoff would run into the river and bring the river up. It's not the river coming onto the property. It's the water runoff from the impervious surfaces that's collecting on it and causing a problem for everybody. Having a project of this size with a drainage system that doesn't work is not good for the neighbors. It's not good for the town. Having this project in the downtown area with a horrible situation that hasn't been attended to for years and this Band-Aid being put on it in order to start renting, I think is very bad. I think that the attention ought to be put on fixing the system and not giving them rentals until they do it. There are many ways that it can be fixed on the interim. It doesn't have to wait for dredging of the river. It's not a river problem. It's a runoff problem.
Well, initially, I am struggling to remove this plan from the... I keep dismissing David. He keeps coming back.
Yeah, if you want me to stop, yeah, I keep getting booted somehow.
Yeah. There's no, you're not listed as a presenter, but your screen is still there. Can you look at your screen and, you know, X it out so that you're not, it's not your screen anymore? You want to try that?
It shows me that I am no longer presenting, actually.
No, I meant across the bottom where it says, "Mic, Camera, Screen."
Yeah, I've selected that and I've unselected it. And it's showing me that I am not actually presenting.
Well, then...
Somehow I'm locked on the screen and I'm not quite sure how. Did that work?
There you go.
There we are.
I simply clicked it multiple times until it worked. It was the old button match.
Now, I actually finally went to these little dots and made me the presenter again. That's what did it. Well, okay, technology. Okay, Mr. Clapp, thank you for your comments. Does anybody else have any comments that they would like to make? Anybody?
Yes, I would, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Dorothy.
Yes, well, first of all, I would like to talk about the 25-page plan. I took the time and read that. Nowhere in there is any consideration for the impact on the residents that have been tolerant of this impact for over two years. Now, I don't see how this would be allowed when I can't go to my shower and turn it on and get a hot shower. I cannot just turn on the faucet and get hot water. I cannot do laundry. I have to do it in a small, plastic, compact, that fits in my bathtub, washing machine. And what I can't do, we need to lug to a laundromat. I'm 63. I'm disabled. My partner is 71 with a hernia and arthritis in both his knees. Now, that's not even taking into consideration any other health hazard that this may impact us while we play games about where we're gonna park cars. We're talking about lives. We're talking about quality of life that has been taken away from us. We sit here and suffer with anxiety, depression, as we look at our stuff that is just sitting and being destroyed and we're worried about parking a car and getting people in there for their convenience. I want to know about my convenience. I want an answer. I think we've been waiting long enough. And I'm really tired. I'm really tired of this. And not have, this hasn't even been blown out yet. And I'm telling you, we cannot survive here through this while you play parking games and the humidity rises. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dorothy. Okay, any additional comments, feedback from any of the board members?
This, again, it's obviously be a question for the Chair. But to reiterate, this approving or not approving this plan at this time doesn't affect whether or not they can get tenants, sign tenants up yet. They still have an ASBIL that needs to get approved, correct?
They have to submit an ASBIL that should show all of the ASBILs of all of the drainage structures and whether or not it conforms to what the Planning Board approved when the project was first approved. They cannot get a certificate of occupancy until that happens.
So in essence, I mean, I understand. I sympathize and understand. But in essence, this isn't the question before us isn't the one that addresses their concerns, correct? I mean, that's, nobody can really answer that here. But from my understanding, this is about satisfying the one condition, whether or not the ASBIL meets and fixes or the drainage structure was designed in a working manner that's correct, will establish Mr. Clapp's claims to the flooding issues. I don't know if anybody else sees it.
Bill Blaze, do you want to speak after that or speak to that?
I guess I'm conflicted just as Greg is. I mean, they came to us because they had to satisfy this condition. There's the potential there that the site development itself has created a secondary issue. And we're kind of stuck in between because we don't know the condition. We know it's been built. We just don't know to what state because we haven't seen the ASBIL yet to compare it to the design plan. So, you know, we can't, I don't think tonight we can sit here and substantiate yes or no as to whether or not the site itself is causing additional flooding problems. Not just the fact that there are some spaces inside of the 100-year flood zone that was established on a FEMA map that they have to find an alternative space for.
It is my understanding from speaking to the town planner about this that the only thing that's up for consideration tonight is whether or not the Board accepts the proposal for the parking. While we certainly understand what Mr. Banks and Ms. Dorothy are indicating and what Mr. Clapp has indicated, we can't actually speak to that with any degree of certainty whatsoever until we see the ASBILs and the ASBILs have been reviewed by the Board's peer review engineer. So I certainly am happy to get their comments and concerns on the record. But I don't think that we can, you know, create a path forward about their concerns until we see those plans and find out, as you said, Bill, if the work has been constructed the way it was supposed to and is it functioning the way it was designed to.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Dorothy.
How long will that take? And how long do we expect it to live like this? I believe, you know, we are considered senior citizens, you know? And we can't, I'm telling you. This has to be addressed so that we can be living comfortably with the quality of life that we should be. There shouldn't be a delay.
The problem's jurisdiction.
Well, then make jurisdiction. I don't know. But, you know, this hat, like I said, hasn't even blossomed. We've been sitting real quiet, real quiet.
I promise, we sympathize with you. But the problem is...
Well, I hope so because for me, a luxury, huh? For Boston, really?
What?
Ms. Dorothy, could you let Mr. Walsh finish, please? I didn't, I couldn't hear what he said.
What I was trying to say is, we have a certain set of rules that are laws. I'm going to call them laws, but they are laws that we're obligated to follow set by the state. And there are certain parameters we're allowed to judge inside of with certain things. Our hands are essentially tied in terms of what we can look at at certain times. And this, to me, seems like one of those times where, you know, I'm sure you have an attorney who says you have a valid claim. The problem is, at this time, I'm not sure we can address that at this time. I don't know. I'm not a legal expert, but...
Well, then I would say that's negligence.
Me not being a legal expert is negligent?
It hasn't already been looked at because we've been complaining and made people aware for how long?
We understand that, Ms. Dorothy. What we're trying to say is that how we perceive things is not necessarily how structures are in place or are not in place. And until we see that and it is reviewed by an engineer, we don't have the ability to say this isn't constructed correctly or it is constructed correctly. We don't have, the law does not give us the ability to do that. We have to wait, unfortunately, until that is presented to us for approval. I can certainly ask Mr. Andronico in a moment if he has a timeline on when he expects that to happen. But there isn't a requirement that we can put on it that says within a week you have to turn it in to us. We don't have that ability. It's not that we're trying to say we won't do it. It's we're saying we can't do it until we are allowed to conform to the law about what ASBIL plans show and what the reviewing engineer determines about them. These meetings are recorded. So all of your comments and concerns are already on the record as in a recording, but they're also in all of the board members' minds. but they're also all in all of the board members' minds and awareness of the situation.
Well, I would hope so, because we're the ones that are the most impacted. And I will tell you that we are suffering over here. We pay an outrageous electric bill because we have to survive severely, only on electric here. That's all we got. Nobody's caring about that.
Ms. Dorothy, I, I, I sympathize with you and I, I, you have no reason to believe me or not when I say to you that the board understands your concerns and appreciates that, we are not ignoring them. We're trying to do the best that we can within what the law allows us to do.
Right, well, all right, well, I, I, we'll talk with our attorney.
Okay. Mr. Andronico, do you mind if I ask you if you have any timeframe? If you don't know, you can say you don't know.
I, I'm, I'm happy to speak to that. Our anticipation is that we will complete our site construction, probably within a two-week timeframe. And I think that's important to note, that the infrastructure which was submitted and approved by the town has not yet been completed. We expect, as I mentioned, within that two-week period to have completed that design, including paving, including all the proper pitches to drainage, the installation of a spillway, which will complete the design, and, and we will have a representation of the true condition on site, at which time we will submit all the required documentation and request inspection by the town and their third-party peer reviewers, at which time, that would, that would, that would go hand-in-hand with our application for TCO. And it's, I think it's just important to remember that this application or this item up for review right now is simply a mark, a parking management plan. And I think, as Mr. Walsh mentions, does not necess, does not, does not in turn issue a, a TCO or ability to rent units. This is simply a condition, an approval condition, that we were required to submit a plan in the same way that we were required to submit a stormwater management plan. This is mutually exclusive from any of the conditions on site and mutually exclusive from the site design and subsequent approval.
Well, unfortunately, we have become your compensatory storage.
We are also certainly aware of the situation and do sympathize. Contrary to what you may believe, we are urgently trying to resolve the issue out there and complete the site work to relieve the condition that we find on site. But currently, it is an active construction site and an incomplete system. Until we can complete that system, we can't address any concerns as to the function of it.
Okay, so we go back to the original issue at hand, which is whether or not the board will approve the temporary parking management plan proposal for this site as required under their Transit Oriented Development Special Permit. So to do that, I would need a motion to accept the parking management plan.
Is there a version or a date to, so the 426-21 plan?
Do you want, you can call it out, according to that plan?
I think it's important to call it out.
We have to know which one.
426, 426 is the date of the plan.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the flood management parking plan for 21 East Apartments at 21 East Street North at Edinburgh, Mass., dated 4/26/2021.
There's a second?
Second.
For the discussion, okay, this is a roll call vote. Mr. Lawrence? Of standing, Mr. Blaze?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
Uh, and I say aye. So that just checks that one little box for you, Mr. Andronico. If you could stay in contact with me by email when you have a sense of when you're going to be providing this. We do not have a town planner or a clerk at the moment, so you need to email me at mclarner@annadlborough.com, okay? And if you, if you could stay in contact, please, so that I can provide the board with any updates that we may have as we go along. Mr. Clapp, would you like me to do you the courtesy of letting you know when we anticipate it appearing on the agenda?
Yes, I would. And do I understand that there have been some recent modifications that have been submitted of the plans?
No, 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 he's just saying that the, the final ASBILs are not done yet because they're not done working yet. So they won't, they can't draw those until it's all done.
Yes, thank you.
And that it will be up for examination as to whether the site complies with what was originally permitted. Okay, will you let Mr. Banks and Ms. Dorothy know? Or do you want me to, would you do that, or do you want me to do that?
I'll do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Banks and Ms. Dorothy, for coming and expressing your concerns, we appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Clapp.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andronico, we'll be...
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is Pioneer Management Level 3 Site Plan Review. Mr. Minuzian, are you here for this? Mr., I have to open the public hearing if that's what you're going to talk about. I can't, you're muted, I didn't mute you.
Okay, sorry about that. Yes, I'm here for Pioneer Management.
Okay.
He's requested a continuation.
Time out, before you say anything about it, I need a motion to reopen the public hearing for special permit for 777 South Washington Street.
Don't move.
There's a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Blaze?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
M requires a yes, so the public hearing is reopened. And Mr. Minuzian?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record. My name is David Minuzian. I'm here tonight representing the applicant Pioneer Management. We would respectfully request a continuance to your next meeting at the end of this month. We're still awaiting for approval of the stormwater management plan from Horsley-Witten through the Conservation Commission. They've had some delays on their end. We just received that, I think, last week, but we hadn't have time to review it. So, that's coming before the Conservation Commission on their meeting, I believe, next, this coming Tuesday. So, having that, we respectfully request that we continue to your meeting at the end of the month.
Okay, so I will take a motion to continue this hearing to Thursday, May 20th, 2021, at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Walsh, seconded by Mr. Collins. Roll call vote, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Blaze?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
M requires a yes, so that hearing is continued to Thursday, May 20th, at 6:30. Thank you, Ms. Dorothy. Okay. Okay, I, item E, Greater Attleboro Area Council for Children. To be honest with you, I don't know if Dan Campbell has sent in a request for a continuation. I have not received an email from him. But I, and I asked to be able to access Jen's emails to see if he had emailed her, and I was, was told I'd have access to them, but I don't. So, I'm just going to ask someone to make a motion to open it and continue it to May 20th, and I will email Mr. Campbell tomorrow. As far as I know, they still haven't gotten National Grid approval for the work. So somebody needs to make a motion to open and continue to May 20th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Walsh, second by Mr. Collins. Roll call vote, Mr. Blaze?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
M requires a yes, so Greater Attleboro Area Council for Children is continued to Thursday, May 20th. Item F, again, I know that their zoning board case has been continued to May 18th. So, I will request that, that be opened and continued to May 20th. Again, I cannot access the emails. I don't know if it has not, if, if it has not, then I will reach out to them tomorrow to send emails to ask them to sign off on the continuation and extension. So I need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second, a motion made by Mr. Walsh, second by Mr. Collins. Roll call vote, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Blaze?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
M requires aye, so Greenleaf for 91 George 11 Drive is continued to Thursday, May 20th. Item G, Case 21-02 Gregory Manor. I will take a motion to reopen the public hearing for Gregory Manor. I move by Mr. Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second, second by Mr. Blaze, roll call vote, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Blaze?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
M requires an aye, so the public hearing for Gregory Manor is reopened. Who would like to speak first?
Yes, Madam Chair, for the record, David Minuzian, with offices in Attleboro, representing Darius Gregory, the applicant, who I see on the screen. Also with us tonight is Larry Tilton from Tilton and Associates. Madam Chair, members of the board, it's my understanding that correspondence between Horsley-Witten and Tilton is pretty much at an end. I'd like to take this opportunity now to have Larry Tilton just walking through the latest responses to Horsley-Witten's last letter, so that you can, you can be brought up to date. And I hopefully will be done with that peer review and all those issues in there. So Larry, I'd like to have you take the board through that.
Thank you, Dave, members of the board, Larry Tilton, Tilton Associates. We're going to take the time and go through the edits, the drafting edits that Horace Whitney reviewed. I'm capable of doing each and every one of them individually. And if we can share the screen, I'll quickly show you them. And I think I want to go right straight to sheet six. Go ahead.
You have to wait a minute, you have to wait a minute.
All right, that's fine, just take your time.
Go right ahead, Mr. Tilton.
Thank you. That was the cover sheet, we made some revisions with HW's request. And just so I could start off, they're pretty much drafting issues that HW had concerns with, where details might have had one elevation in the plan, there wasn't quite clear on another one, so they wanted them cleaned up. So we can just go to sheet six, why don't you just go to the sheets, then sheet six there? What I've done is I've taken, this is the edited sheet seven, that one sheet two. HW requested a few drafting edits, and I think I can best use this sheet to pretty much hit the entire list. There was only about seven items in all that had to be done, and it was more clarification. One of the clarifications is on the bias fossil here, house number two. They wanted the overflow grate on this underground recharge system to have a rim elevation. It was in the table on the date, on the detail sheet, but they wanted it also put on the plan, so we so complied. The same situation was on house number three. The grate was shown, the overflow grate. This is just in case the big storms hit, everything gets flooded, it bubbles out the top like a catch basin and runs out on the ground. So we added the elevation at their request here. The, another area that they would like some more clarification is right in this area here, on this pond area one. They wanted an elevation added there, and we've done that, we've added this one in. We did the same thing on pond number two, right in here. We had some, an overflow grate that was 175.2, was recalc to be 120, 175.7, and we've added that area right here. So, and then we had another one in here, we cleaned up that drafting area. So that was pretty much it on, think, do you want to just shift to the next? Is it double click? Just shift me to the next page. So, yeah, seven. The one area that we did do some clarification in, they were having trouble with a 174.7 elevation that's right here at this existing stone wall that we're trying desperately to save. And it's more like a copper dam or little dam to slow it up. We have a 174.7 elevation, and it wasn't quite clear to them, okay, if we're going to backwater up in here during the big storm events, how does this 174.7 elevation work? Where the ground grade is existing at 174. So what we did is we bubbled it out and we detailed it right here. This is the existing wall. The 174 existing ground grade comes through and turns right before the wall, and we're just going to mound up right in front of the wall to act like a little copper dam to backwater up about six inches deep during the storm. And that's kind of a recharge component for water quality. So we blew it up, so it was a little clearer. We put some spot grades in here so they could, contractors can understand a little better what happens, and that was the major addition to us. So that's it. We, why don't you just take me to the, the old catch basin up there, the erosion control, they, they wanted, next sheet, no, that's, that one right there. They wanted us to add more erosion control in the construction, sedimentation basins during construction. They wanted some more orange fence. We have the entire site virtually ringed in erosion control, but they wanted some more right in this area. So we've added that at their request, we added a second area right in this area. What I believe they think is, these areas are going to be constructed before we do all of this construction, which is not going to be the case. We're going to build these ponds in these areas at the end and work our way out. But anyway, we added them, so they're on the sheet. And this one catch basin up in here that we, we had the erosion control, the silt sacks in, but it wasn't called out clear enough in the explanation. So we bubbled it out and added that in also, so that catch basin, even though it's two feet higher in grade and the trucks have already gone over the construction pad here, so we, we just added, it was easier to just add it than it was to go any further with it. So, we also have met with the fire department and went over the turning movements for their engines to come in and do a reverse and go back out. So we did a turning movement in both directions, they're satisfied with that. They had asked the question whether the profile grate coming in was going to be too steep for them. So I, we went through the process and compared it to Draper Avenue, and they were satisfied that if they can go up Draper Avenue, they can go up this grade. And they were getting hung up a little bit on the 10 to 1 exaggeration on the profile, thinking it was steep going in and steep coming out. And when you draw it at scale, it's pretty flat all told. So they were satisfied with it. I do not know if they sent anything over to the planning board. Jen was involved in that virtual meeting, and everybody was satisfied. So you're going to have to...
According to her notes, the applicant, the planner, and fire prevention had a virtual meeting on 428, and all fire concerns have been addressed.
Yeah, exactly. So with all of that, I'm able to go through each and everything, but I think with HW's review that came in today, their conclusion pretty much says it all. HW is satisfied that we've met all their concerns and we're ready to go. We probably only have one other issue that we should talk about before we end this, and that's the waivers. There is on the bottom left corner that... There is on the bottom left corner of the front sheet, there is a waiver request. And we should probably talk about those. If you'd like, I can read them off and we can go to it, or I can answer questions.
Before you do that, I would like to point out to the planning board that that is correct. What the final conclusion that HW said that they're satisfied the applicant has adequately addressed. They did make two recommendations for possible conditions of approval. One, it was their language was the planning board may choose to include a condition requiring additional testing to be conducted prior to construction to confirm soils and groundwater at the infiltration basins. And the other one was that the HW recommends that the areas for erosion control be defined by an orange construction fence or similar. Do you want to, Rick, remember those, Mr. Tilton?
We have, we added that onto the plan. That was that erosion control plan. We added the additional erosion control. The conditions that they thought might be appropriate, and this is at the time of construction, the silt and erosion control fencing should be inspected because as you realize, this is not controlled by the conservation commission. So they won't have the inspection part of it. So we agreed with that, yes, if we're going to put it in.
I'm sorry, that was B of the, of that section, yeah, to have a condition for inspection of erosion control. Boy, that'll bring back memories.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Soil testing, you know, it's up to the board. We've done 12, 14 some test pits out there. We're pretty confident the soils are glacial, and that's it. But whatever, if you want to put the condition on, we'll just take another test bit when we're out there.
That's up to the board to determine.
Yes.
I would just as soon finish this before we move on to the waivers, if that's okay with you. Could I have any comments or questions from the board? Do you want additional test pits? They've already agreed to the condition about erosion control inspection. I want to know if you feel the need for more than the existing soil test pits, Mr. Walsh.
So I need some clarification. They want tests, or they're suggesting we do test pits at the proposed infiltration locations to confirm the soil types, or are they worried about groundwater?
Well, it's groundwater, yes.
Because if it's groundwater, that affects your design, right?
Well, it's really the soil types of permeability part of it. So we've done two in each area. They think that maybe we might need some others. So it is what it is. So the other condition, there was one other that they, at the time we grade the driveway in, that they wanted to be sure that there was no ponding that might be created where the other two driveways split off to the right, if you recall. So, and I, the way I, the way I answered that was, at the time of construction, it's very possible that we have to feather out the aprons going into these other driveways. And we have to make sure that we don't pond water in them. So, but that's going to be a field construction correction or edit, and there's not much we can do about it on paper right now. So that was it. But to answer your questions, yes, it's groundwater.
So I would probably say that maybe when you're trying to compromise a little bit on this, that while you're excavating them, have somebody there to confirm soil types.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll need to be on site, and we'll either myself or.
So what I'm saying is like, as opposed to having to do test pits, right? You just have to have somebody on site to, while they're constructing it at the beginning. You don't have to be there through the entire construction, but during the initial excavation to confirm soil types.
Yes.
Are you amenable to a condition that says that?
Be a special.
I have no problem with that type of condition.
Okay. So is that acceptable to everybody else that we put on a condition that says that the while construction is happening, they have to have someone on site for observation to confirm the soil types?
Me.
May I address the board? Darius Gregory.
Oh, hi. I'm sorry. I couldn't see which one was let up. Go right ahead.
Um, so my only question to the board, and specifically Mr. Walsh, is just if we've already done that exercise, I guess what's the merit to do it again at the beginning of construction, whereas they've already looked at the soils?
Because they haven't looked at soils at those locations, and it's part of the stormwater requirements when you're doing a recharge. And you confirm the, one, the soil types at those locations can handle absorbing water into the ground. And then two, that the groundwater at those locations isn't within, what, two or three feet or something like that?
So, so Mr., Mr. Tilton, so is that accurate? I was under pressure. We already did, did that exercise. But if we didn't, then it seems like it would need to be done. But I thought you already checked the soils.
It has. It has been done already. But when we start exposing the entire bottom of that basin, it, soil types could change when you move over, being New England, 15 or 20 feet, a little differently. So that's why they said maybe another test pit at the time of construction might be needed. Sometimes we have to modify the design when we expose the entire bottom area of those two pond one and pond two. We do the same thing when we do a bottom hole inspection at a septic system. Yes, we do test pits. Yes, we do perks. And yes, we design the system and get it approved. But before the system can actually get constructed, the signed engineer for the project needs to inspect the bottom hole to see that, okay, the soil types are consistent throughout, and everybody's satisfied. Sometimes they're a little bit different over here. Maybe you need to either dig that model out of there and refill it with sand or appropriate material. Or we need to modify the size a little bit to handle the same amount of cube in the area. So it's not an uncommon, it's not an uncommon thing. It's just a second look at a bigger area.
Okay. Thank you for that insight. Thank you.
Can I just chime in for a sec? I think the whole premise of Horsey Witten's comment was derived from the handbook, the stormwater handbook. When you do an infiltration basin, you're required to do a minimum of three test pits, and there were only two. So they were just suggesting to us that we may want to make a condition that they do another one. But Larry was also correct in what he was saying. Once that area is excavated, verification does have to take place that all of the soils are going to be suitable.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thanks, Bill. So, Mr. Blaze, I'm going to turn to you then. Would you please be so kind as to come up with the language for that condition of approval? We're already okay on the one about inspection of erosion control, and I don't need it now, but when we get to the end of this, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Tilton, I'm going to go back to you for the waivers, please.
Thank you. The waivers are in the lower right, lower left-hand corner of the title sheet. Pretty small, but I'll read them off. The first waiver that's being requested is the 30-foot utility easement. And instead of the being separate from the 26-foot common drive, be waived to be allowed to be within the common drive. This is spinning off from the DPW's request, wanting their water lines and utilities inside the layout, not running parallel to, if you remember, the other project we did on Allen Avenue. This is, this is the results of it. So the way the bylaw is written, it's supposed to be running outside the common driveway easement or common driveway way. So DPW wants to put it in, we need to ask for a waiver, and we're asking for that waiver. The other item is to allow the eight-inch ductal iron water line to also be in the right of way or inside the common driveway, similar to what it is on the subdivision road. So, and if you recall, the DPW wanted their water line in the, and they took the responsibility. If they had to, if it was a break and they had to come in and repair it, they would repair the asphalt. They'd repair the driveway. Well, that's, that's 2.9 of the standards. That's one of them. Sure you want me to read them right down?
Yeah, I don't know about anybody else. I'm struggling to read it with that print.
It's without the actual plans in front of you, it'd be awfully hard to read it. Can we increase it?
I'm reading it off the set of plans I have, the smaller set. So that's okay. If everybody else can read it, I'm okay.
Okay, the second one is access the 3.2.1 that when we discussed at the previous meeting, presently, the driveway comes in and goes on up to the applicant's house. Off to the right, there are, there's a private driveway that's setting in an easement that services two other houses. And that distance in is about 200 feet. All right. Technically, technically, the common driveway, private driveway starts about 200 feet back in from the Mount Hope Street. We're asking you for permission to make that all private common drive all the way out to Route 1. I'm sorry, Route 1, yeah, Mount Hope Street, so that we can put private drive street sign at Mount Hope Street and not in 200 feet. That's what that one's about, access.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions on that? Everybody looks bewitched. Okay, go ahead.
The only thing I have on that is we need to make sure we make a note. I believe we were talking about some sort of special permit clarifying, no, sorry, special condition clarifying that this is a unique case and that like there can't be any other access to parcels off the site or something.
Right.
We have to go back and watch, but it's a good time to note that.
Okay.
That's correct. The next one is the design standards. It's in the bylaw, it says the common driver shall be designed and built in accordance with the DPW construction standards. Said, said standards call for the centerline radius of, for a minimum public street, minor, or minor street, 30 mile an hour to be 300 foot in radius. We're asking for that because it's a common driveway and it's not a public street to be waived down to 100 feet in centerline radius, which is the way it was approved all the way through the process, the pre-application and in the design. So it's not a 30 mile an hour. We're asking for it to be down to three, 100 feet in 10 mile an hour traffic on that common driveway, which is respectable. Okay? The next one, the fifth one is.
Wait a minute, any questions on that? No? Okay, go ahead.
The next one is the 12-inch ductal iron culverts under the driveway. There are two areas. We have a three and a four. The cover over those pipes, because of the, the construction standards, is supposed to be three, 30 inches with a waiver or four feet. We're asking to waive that down to 12 inches because these ductile iron pipes are also encased in concrete. And that's the, and the whole reason for this is because we're trying to meet the existing grades that are coming in on that first 200 feet of driveway, so that we aren't altering everybody's land in that, up in the front.
Any questions on that one? Okay.
And the last one, well, actually, the last two are the same ones we dealt with on Allen Avenue, Alvin's, where the certificate of compliance and the completion, the road doesn't have to be built before a bond is issued. And the CO, the occupancy permits cannot be accepted until a bond. So in other words, we don't want to, we don't want to have to build that whole road before we pull the building permit. We want to be able to put a bond in place. And it's the same conditions we had on the Alvin's. This is those two, 7.8 is the one that conflicts with it.
Any questions on that?
Can we remember how we dealt with it? The last one.
I'd have to hope that I am able to either access Jen's computer or get ahold of the copy of the Alvin's conditions so that we can use the same kind of language.
I can supply, I can supply that.
Wasn't that handy? It has not, I'll be honest, it has not been pretty trying to find everything for this. Okay, okay. Is that the last one?
Yes, it is, Madam.
Okay. The certificate of, okay. Okay, questions? I know Greg, you like to do any waivers first. You want to make a motion? Do you want to make any comments, Mr. Walsh?
Wouldn't we close and then make motions and approve?
Right. Well, we're still talking about, well, okay, you want to make a motion to close because the waivers?
I mean, you're right. We're still talking about these. So we probably, while we can have dialogue, can talk about the waivers, but.
I think that's safer.
Yeah. So I think running through with everybody had questions. There was really just, what, two of them, three of them? The last, last one, we just need to check on the language to make sure. I have a feeling we're all going to feel the same way we felt with the last one, last project, the Auburn's property. And then.
In terms of a certificate of occupancy and building permit?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. As long as we're consistent with the language that we used on the Alvin's, I don't think that's a problem.
Yeah. So I think we just went through them all. I think, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but it seemed like everybody was generally okay with most of them, except for the, I believe there's one or two that we were going to put special conditions on to address, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes. So in other words, you would want to make sure that the special, yeah, I know what you're talking about. So you'd want to make sure that the special conditions that we used on the Auburn environmentally friendly subdivision that speak to the same type of waivers that we do the same, well, we don't have it in front of us, so that's a problem.
Yeah, I'll be completely honest with you. I'm okay with closing this. I'm just going to tell you, I'm okay with closing this. I'm not okay with voting on it because I'd like to, especially with how we're obviously in a bit of a flux here. I'd like to see something written and then get conditions.
I have to be honest, I thought that we were going to have a draft of conditions, but.
I thought that was going to be the case, too.
Yes, that didn't happen. So anyhow, so that means that if we close this and plan on issuing the conditions and waivers, et cetera, we would do that on the 20th. But it means that I would have to hotfoot it into town hall next week and pull out those conditions and waivers and send it to everybody adjusting the language for this one and get it to Mr. Menugian and Mr. Tilton, as well as the members of the board.
Madam Chair, through you, I can offer my services to the chair. If you want to send me a draft of the last Auburn decision, you could certainly do your own decision. I could take a stab at making a proposed decision for your review, just to help you with the clerical end of it.
I appreciate that, Mr. Menusian. I'll have to get back to you on that based on whatever I'm able to pull together at town hall.
Sure.
But I thank you.
I can supply you with those, Dave. I have those conditions.
Would be helpful to get them in Word format, so we don't have to reload them. So my guess is the town's records may be in Word, I'm not sure.
We have them in
Yeah, they'd be in, in Word, yeah.
One of the, one of the conditions is that they be placed in this set. Whatever the planning board votes on, conditions have to be part of this set.
Well, can I make a suggestion, Madam Chair? Maybe Larry can get you what he has, help you expedite it on your end. Then you can take a look at it. And if you need my assistance, just give me a, a heads up.
Okay.
I can handle that.
I, I, did you, did you leave space? I know the last time you left a blank space. Do you have a blank space this time?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So
Okay, so, and that's acceptable to you. We'll close tonight and work on getting all the paperwork together in order and sent out to the board members to review and get back to me, not, no reply alls. And then I'll get out a final copy to you guys before the 20th.
So prior to closing though, do you just want to quickly run through the special permits? We can, I mean, the special conditions, that way we can just make sure you have them and they're lined up on it.
We have the one that, that Bill was working on. Do you have that ready, Bill?
I think so.
Hey, shoot.
All right, I suggest we put a special condition in that the applicant have their engineer provide the planning board with a letter that they have verified that the soils are consistent within the infiltration areas.
Engineer provide planning board with letter. Keep going.
Verifying that the soils are consistent in the infiltration areas.
Don't you want to say that they are consistent and suitable for the infiltration areas?
I think it's
Consistent and suitable for infiltration areas, okay?
Do you want to add inspected excavations to verify that they are?
Applicants engineer shall provide planning board with a letter verifying an inspection of the soils indicating that the soils are consistent and suitable for the infiltration areas.
Maybe that they inspected and verify that they're consistent and suitable.
Okay.
That, that's fine.
And, and the date of the inspection as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and the second one was simply that prior to construction, that the erosion control shall be inspected. Applicant to request inspection from planning board chair, I guess. I don't know, we'll leave it at that way for now.
Can I suggest planning board, planning board chair or whatever subsequent plan do you have?
Right. Depending on the timeframe, I, I, I don't see anybody here for at least three weeks or so.
What about 11F about they suggested we might have a special condition that, you know, no ponding occurs when they finish grade that first 200 feet of driveway because it is accessed by two other parties?
That's correct. That's the third one.
Okay, so do you want to include, want to have that condition say that the same kind of thing, that the engineer shall provide the planning board with a letter indicating a field inspection on a particular date verifies no ponding at the driveways?
No, you won't need that.
What do you need?
I would just say that they have to make sure that it's graded so that they can't, and then it'll just have to be a periodic thing because again, it's going to depend on rain events and particular points of construction.
Yeah, it's a, it's going to, it's going to come up more at the asphalt level than it is at the during construction or right now. So it's at the end when we finally do the finished grading and draw the asphalt is where that's going to show up. But believe me, I'm sure those two are butters that go, have to go down that driveway are going to soon bring it to our attention. They're going through a mud puddle.
So anybody got a recommendation for language on that?
Madam Chair, through you, perhaps you can just say that the applicant shall maintain the first, I think it was 200 feet of the entrance drive in such a states that there is no ponding during significant rate effect, events, is that what Mr. Walsh is trying to get at?
That's fine.
Yeah, I think that works.
Okay, I got it.
See, I would be a good town planner.
You missed the deadline, though.
It's not the first time I've missed anything.
Okay, 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 so we have the three special conditions that I will write up. The one about inspections in, excuse me?
Are, are you adding, are you reviewing the three or are you saying there?
I'm just saying there's three. The first one is about the soils and the infiltration base. And the second one is about inspection of erosion control. And the third one is the one that Mr. Menusian still kindly just read about the first 200 feet, no ponding.
And then there was, I, I, the previous meeting, I thought we came up with decent language about establishing a special condition that makes it so that these, is it, you know, I'm, I'm just ad hocing here.
Oh, for the, so that nobody else can access the property? Yeah, I wrote that down.
You can't utilize this roadway to access
Other parcels, right, yeah.
Parcels, exactly.
Right, yeah.
Madam Chair, you could simply say that the entrance drive shall not be used except by the lots within the except the demise premises and also those prior, those existing neighbors that have access rights through that driveway.
Yeah, but I, I can see something in the future, and this is what I was saying last time, where you could have an adjacent property punch roads, punch a driveway through first and then come back and do one of these and then wind up getting five, six, seven, eight, so.
Well, actually, then, can, can I suggest that put no other environmentally friendly open space design developments can access this entrance drive without the authorization of the planning board, something to that effect.
Now, the, the board was, no, no access to any other parcels shall be provided other than those shown on the plan. No access to any other parcels other than those shown on the plan as part of
That's fine, because that takes care of the others too.
Right.
That's fine, that takes care of the others too.
Okay.
Yeah, and then as another note, we need to make a future to go in to clarify that for something.
We need, we need to amend the, we need to amend the environmentally friendly bylaw.
Yeah, because I see this coming up again, and I think we're all okay with it because this one's the first one, but we're not okay with it in the future, because I think
Right.
What everybody's opinion is.
Okay. Alrighty then, so anybody have any other comments they want to make about what I'm going to be so happily typing next week?
Was the, we also talked about the bus shelter last time. Was that something that would need a condition to ease that burden of the bus shelter?
Yeah.
Or no? So you would need a special condition from us to ease the burden of having that shelter that you did. And I think we said something, just like a bench or something, right?
Just the pullover area, yeah.
Well, the pullover is already, already there, but like just a bench. Right, is that what we talked about last meeting?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Add that to the waiver list, we'll add it to the waiver list that the bus shelter has been waived, that
Okay, alright, and then we'll put that, we'll make the condition that goes with that. It's, it, I, I'm going to have to go back to the language that we used for Orchard. The Alvin's one, to make sure that we're consistent with the language, so I'll have to do that next week.
Okay.
Lucky.
Yeah, and then it's obviously the conditions for the last couple waivers there to give them, but then take back some.
Yep.
Alright, other than that, I'll shut up.
Oh, no, that's fine. Anybody got anything else? Okay, I will take a, a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blaze, seconded by Mr. Collins, roll call vote, Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Blaze.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Hi.
And Mr. Walsh.
Hi.
And requires nice, public hearing is closed. And oh, let's see. And my task on behalf of the board is to make sure that I get to that fairly promptly and get that off to you guys probably by the end of next week. Well, it has to be by the end of next week. In order to allow any back and forth and be ready to do it on the 20th.
Thank you very much.
I guess I better look at my calendar, huh?
You're a saint, Marie.
No, I'm not.
May 20th.
Yeah, I'll have to come in Monday and do it. I got stuff, or Thursday afternoon, I've got stuff booked every other day. Okay. Alrighty.
Thank you very much, have a good
Okay, thank you very much, folks, have a good evening. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Bye bye. Okay, next item on the agenda is H case 21 dash 03, 41 Plain Street and 581 Kelly Boulevard. I don't see anybody here to talk about that. And I don't know because I can't access Jen's emails if they have requested a continuance, but since we haven't even gotten, as far as I know, any peer review comments back, I'm going to ask for a motion to open this case and continue it to Thursday, May 20th. And I'll try and find out what's going on in the meanwhile.
So moved.
Mr. Collins made the motion, Mr. Walsh second. Yes, okay. I think you both said so moved at the same time. Okay, roll call, Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Bill Blaze.
Yes.
Bill Collins.
Hi.
Greg Walsh.
Hi.
Emery Clark says aye. Okay, that brings us to the chair's corner. Well, obviously, we don't have a planner's platter. Mike Borg and I did conduct interviews today. I have a sense of things, but he's going to be getting in touch with human resources and doing whatever needs to be done on that end. As soon as I know anything, I will let you know. I really can't say a whole lot more than that.
Marie, I I didn't hear what you talked about at the beginning of the meeting. I was offline, so I'm not sure what that refers to.
Mike Borg, the town manager advertised for the town planner position.
Okay.
And they got applications that were reviewed by human resources. And four were forwarded to him for interviews. He let me sit in on them today, but he is the one who hires. So as soon as I know what's happening, I'll let you guys know, but I don't, I don't know what's happening.
Is there an intended deadline that he would pick someone by?
He will pick someone by next week sometime, first part of next week. The other piece to it is that we had, and I, this is where I could use your help. They had to re-advertise the position for the clerk because, as you know, our clerk left rather abruptly and went, I believe, to Boston. I don't think that they've gotten applications, so it was being re, I'm not sure if they did, but it was being reposted either yesterday or today. So if you know anybody who's looking for a job as a clerk to the planning board administrative assistant, tell them to apply.
I think the ad's a little intimidating, that might be why.
Really? What, I don't have it in front of me. I saw it, but I didn't, I, I'll be honest with you. Since I don't have any control over it, I didn't pay a lot of attention to it. Do you want me to pay attention to it and point out what might be a little overwhelming?
I think last time you had just mentioned, we essentially just need someone to be able to be in the office, answer the phone, address people when they come in, and just be able to, you know, basically shuffle everything around as needed. But I think the ad might have said something about, you know, certified mailings and, you know, all of the responsibilities. And if people don't have any of that experience, they might not want to apply, even though it's something that could probably be easily learned.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I know how to do certified mailings. Yeah, okay, I'll talk to Kathy Cook here about it tomorrow. I don't know if you agree with me or not, and I know the position's called an administrative assistant, but to my mind, it's the first person that people see when they come to our office. So it has to be somebody who's got good interpersonal skills. They have to have good computer skills. And they have to be, you know, have attention to detail in order to, you know, track what's, you know, coming in and going out. After that, they, all that other stuff is part of it, but I, I would think that that be, those would be the first three basics to look for. You agree? Do you want all the information? What do you guys think?
No, I agree with that.
Okay. Let's see what I can do with Kathy.
I'm surprised that no one even, you know, even if they didn't have all those qualifications or experience, usually you get people that apply anyway.
I, I think that by the time they hired Lordas, the other people that they thought they would have as a backup all got, either got other jobs or moved along or whatever. I, in talking to not only restaurant owners, but other business people here in town, they're having a lot of trouble hiring people who are collecting unemployment and getting that extra bonus are making more than they would have made in their jobs, so they're not interested in going back to work.
Right.
So to my mind, you know, the, working for a municipality, some people look at it with kind of a I, I think, you know, if you look at it from the long run, the benefits are good, the long-term ability to have a pension and all that. You only have to work 10 years to get that. And if you work in another municipality or state agency, you can transfer those years over. So I, I think those little side benefits should be emphasized a little more, but I don't even know if they put anything about that. But whoever applied could certainly call and inquire about it. Other than that, their the housing production plan date is May 25th for a public workshop for people to sign up for, to be, I, I'm going to be perfectly honest. I don't, I don't know what the housing production plan looks like when it's done. I know what kind of information they're looking for, so I would encourage you guys, if you have any extra time on that evening to devote. They run a pretty well timed meeting, they don't drag it out, they move people along and finish within whatever time they allow. I know that they're looking at what we have for zoning, and they're looking at the comments people have made in the survey originally and in the initial, you know, the land use one that we had a few weeks ago, so. Other than that, I'm, I'm all out. I'll be perfectly honest, I'm tired. I'm really tired, but way it goes. I'm hoping that the, my personally, it gets picked, can start pretty soon. And that they don't have a right angle for a learning curve.
Does the town offer you or the planning board any help?
Karen in the town manager's office has been very helpful to me. It, it mostly has fallen on her and Gail. For example, the, the Pure Roots Marijuana Place, the new, the third one got their license the other day from the state, so they brought in preliminary plans. So Gail from the manager's office called me and asked what to do with it. Initially, I was like, I don't know. But those two ladies have been very helpful in terms of getting me messages and forwarding things to me. The email is a problem unless Unless Jen told somebody to email me, I have not gotten many emails. I got the one from Janet from Porchley Witten today, but I have not been getting emails, so I don't know what's been going on in terms of that. I'm going to call IT tomorrow and see if there's another way that I can get into them. It was supposed to have been done this afternoon, but when I checked my email, there was supposed to be a new folder that was Jen's emails, but there isn't, so. There I am.
Can't you contact Jennifer and ask her to forward to you everything that comes into her mailbox?
I, you know what? I'm not sure if she has access to it anymore. Usually when you leave, they disable your password, so you could, the account could still receive emails, but you don't have access to it.
I see.
I know that when I retired, that's what happened to mine. The very next day, it was gone. So IT should be able to do something. I don't know. I don't know enough about Outlook and how it works to how they send it all to me.
They, they just set up an alias and it forwards it all right to you. I do it whenever I have an employee leave. I'd send their email right to my email, and then I just have a new alias that comes up on the bottom of Outlook dropdown and all their.
I looked, it wasn't, you know, I, you know, exited out of the whole thing, went back into it, did everything I know of to make it pop up, but no such luck, so.
Now, once it's set up correctly, it should just show, her name should just show up on the, on the, on the left-hand side there, you know, to click.
They tell me, but, but it, it doesn't. It's not there.
I'm assuming you do the same thing I do, Bill.
Well, anyhow.
To be set up, and then it'll just, it'll show up. You'll see it there once it's done, you know, once IT takes care of it.
Yeah. The work order went in. I was told that it would be done within an hour, and that was at 12:30, so as I said, I checked it right before I opened this up. Karen had to show me how to do this because neither Nancy nor Jen would show me how to start a meeting or, and, but I'm going to be very clear in this new planner and clerk that the board's got to know a little bit more about what's going on and have the ability, if the planner, if the planner gets sick, you know, not having one of us or more than one of us who has the access to the go-to-meeting account to open, open the meeting up, that's pretty silly.
Well, what's going to happen once we go back to Town Hall? Is North TV going to be there, or are they going to run it?
Well, as I indicated to you earlier, Mike Borg said that we can go back to Town Hall, you know, hopefully we'll do that in June. But they're not going to let the public in. They're going to let the presenters in who will either sit in their cars or in the lobby, and then, you know, it's like going to the doctor. You let me know you're here, and then we call you in when it's your turn. We would be there and the planner would be there, and one, you know, as each group comes in and goes out and, you know, down the downstairs case and up the upstairs case until the hall, and we'll have to have, still have go-to-meeting open because anybody, anybody in the public who wants to either call in or appear has to have that ability. They have them on the big TV screen in the back of the meeting room downstairs. So, because I, I don't think we're going to be back to all in person where everybody's sitting there for a while. Certainly not, not in our, our room because there's not enough space in terms of the seating. There's not enough space to keep people, you know, at least three feet apart, let alone six feet.
Is there any reason we don't meet in that level of conference room all the time? Because there is more room.
No, I'm saying we can go back anytime you want. I would prefer not to go back until we have a planner, because otherwise I'm going to get stuck setting up the room, schlepping all this stuff downstairs, and, and I'm sorry, but I'm not going to do that.
No, I agree with, I agree with that. I'm just saying, in the future, once everything is, once we have a planner and COVID is over, is there any reason we don't meet in a larger room? Because I mean, sometimes we do get a ton of people.
I'll be, I suggested that to Nancy before, more, way more than a year ago, year and a half ago maybe, and was told it was too much trouble, so.
Yeah, the lugging stuff back and forth. There's, there, there used to be a scheduling conflict with the selectmen when they would meet on Thursday nights.
The council meets on Monday. I think we're the only ones, other than maybe one of the council's subcommittees like rules or bylaws or somebody meets on Thursdays, but they don't need stairs. They could meet someplace else.
So it would be nice if we could switch because it would give us more room and probably allow presentations to go better, because our room is not set up for it.
No, I absolutely agree with you. And I, and you know, once COVID is over and, you know, you're allowed to have whatever they consider normal capacity down there, you certainly would have enough room for the presenters and the public and whoever there's taking a seating down there, and that what they would, there's only five of us plus a planner, and there's nine town counselors, plus a town manager, plus an assistant manager, plus a clerk. That's 12, so we are not going to need any near that kind of room. And they already have the Plexiglas separations all set up if we, if we use those for the time being. I don't, I don't think I'm allowed to ask you guys if you're vaccinated, so.
Halfway.
Halfway.
I get my second one on Monday.
I'm good to go. You know, it, it is the funniest thing. I, I never felt, you know, imposed upon this entire time. At least I didn't think I did, but I got to tell you, when, when I got that second shot at Gillette and went outside, if I could have tap danced over to my car, I would have tap danced because it was such a relief, such a relief. I see Mr. Lawrence kind of grinning at me, so I can't.
Well, my second shot is right before our next meeting, so if I'm AWOL, I've, you know, I'm on the floor somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I didn't have any problems with it at all, but so far, so good. My family's all done, so I'm lucky. Well, okay, guys, anybody got anything else you want to talk about? I, I know I keep mentioning things to you, but in terms of, you know, I, I say to Bill Collins, I don't know how many times I've said it, and I will be honest, I did bring it up in the interviews that we don't have design standards, and Bill brought it up three years ago, and we still don't have design standards. I think this time, I'm hoping that with a new planner and situations that make it more amenable to us, that we can really take a look at design standards and zoning issues. Is that we want to take a look at, you know, like Greg mentioned, the environmentally friendly, some of the details and that are kind of screwy. We've talked before, very small conversations about mixed-use zoning. You know that the town council's interested in inclusionary zoning, but I'm, I'm really hoping that we can step that up and, and, you know, have productive conversations about that. You got, the town count, the incoming town council, you know, in the old days, you had to make it through two-thirds of, of town meeting, which was not an easy task. Now with nine members, you need six. So, and they are interested in making people's lives smoother in terms of that, so, and doing, doing more for the town, so. I'm hoping that we can accomplish some of those things. We'll see. I'm going to start saying it now, Bill, not just next time. I am sorry you're leaving us, and I'm going to miss you.
Thanks.
I've always appreciated your comments, your wisdom. You always have had a unique way of looking at things from your own experience, both as a, as a professor and as, you know, planning in California, and just your worldwide experience of being able to talk about things, including archaeology. I have always appreciated that. I may not have told you that, but I have always appreciated that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So if nobody has anything else, I will take a motion to adjourn at 8:11 PM.
I make a motion to adjourn at 8:12, yeah.
8:12, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Walsh, seconded by Mr. Blaze. I got to tell you, when we meet in person, I'm going to be so happy to not keep going. Roll call vote, Mr. Lawrence.
Has anyone ever said no?
Yeah.
I have watched, I have, you mean for, for adjourning? No, I've never heard anybody say no, but.
I have. I have very recently.
Oh, yes, you did. Yeah, you did.
Yeah, when we gave Mr. Lawrence the honorable title of.
Yes, yes.
That must have been blacked out in my mind.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence, what is your vote, please?
It is yes.
Oh, good. Mr. Blaze?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And Marie Claire says, yes, we are adjourned at 8:12 PM. Thank you and good night.
Good night.